Yes, I don't see our chair, so maybe.
A few minutes after 1:00, we are going to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the State Bar of California. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded. I see that we have trustees and members of the public who are joining us remotely. This is the first time that the State Bar offices in Southern California have been open for a trustee's meeting, and as a consequence, we might have public commenters joining us. It doesn't appear that we do based on the signup sheets right now, but certainly just folks should know that that is now a possibility again. If I could have the secretary take the role.
Bratton, not present. Chen?
Here.
Cisneros?
Here.
De La Cruz, not present. Duran?
Present.
No.
President.
Selig?
Here.
Shelby?
Present.
Sol?
Present.
Stallings?
Present.
Tony?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Again, thank you, everyone, for your patience. We're just a little bit behind schedule, but not too far. I think we'll be able to make up for some lost time. At this point in the meeting, I will make a call for a public comment. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address the board on item of interest within the board's jurisdiction. If you are on Zoom, there should be a raise your hand function to let the clerk of the board, the secretary of the board, know that you would like to speak. If you are calling in today, the way to do that is star nine. We will ask that you limit your comments to three minutes once your microphone is engaged. Do we have anybody here present who would like to address the board? Seeing none?
We have one member attending remotely who would like to address the board. Todd Hill.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Hill, good afternoon and welcome back. You have three minutes.
I appreciate that. I actually didn't ever left, but I was quite busy, and I've been enlightened by the presentation, so I appreciate that. I've got two very quick matters. I'm not trying to take much time here. The first is, I do want to remind the members of the board or anyone who's a sworn member of the bar that there are certain tensions of professional responsibility that deal with conflict of interest, even if there's not an internal policy. And so the reality is that my comment here is really related to the appointment of Vanessa Horton as a consultant, as a paid consultant, and the fact that it may cloud certain issues. Again, you have certain cases that are already at bar, and then there are perhaps pending cases where the cloud of attorney-client privilege or some other kind of privilege that would not apply statutorily, but is used to sort of conflate and confuse. That approach is not appropriate, and I think that in this particular case, it's very clear where the conflicts lie. Although I will leave that for incorporation, my reference to my written comments, my written public comments that I've prior submitted, some in excess of, again, 700 days, I've been waiting for them to be released to the public. I'm not sure. There is no statutory ability for the bar to hold public comment, so I'm not quite sure what it's doing there. But my three minutes is up. I do appreciate you for taking the time to hear me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Do we have any other members of the public indicating a desire to address the board?
We do not have any other members of the public who wish to address the board.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. That'll take us to Agenda Item 10, the approval of minutes for July 21 and 22 and August 25 of 2022. Are there any questions, additions, corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve as presented?
Stallings, salute.
Motion by Stallings.
I'll second.
Second by Cisneros. Madam Secretary, the vote, please.
Chen? Oh, I'm sorry. Bratton, absent. Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Aye.
De La Cruz?
Yes.
Thank you. Noel? Trustee Noel, I see you are on camera.
I'm sorry. Had to unmute. Yes.
Thank you. Selig?
Yes.
Shelby?
Aye.
Sol?
Aye.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Aye.
10 ayes, one absent. The motion carries.
Great, thank you very much. That'll move us into Item 30, which is the Chair's oral report. I have just a few items I'd like to bring in front of the board. The first one is a little bit bittersweet. I see our friend and colleague Sonia Dellen up on the screen, and I have to announce that Sonia is leaving the Board of Trustees after many, many years of faithful and very, very helpful service. Sonia and I were sworn in together in this room coming up on, just a little bit more than four years ago now, and it's certainly been a privilege and a joy to serve with her. I just wanted to say, Sonia, on my own behalf personally, and I think on behalf of the entire board, and I suspect other folks will want to add to the chorus here, that it really has been an honor to serve with you. Your input has been insightful and valuable at all the right times, and it's just been it's been great to get to know you through the board and your work. We certainly will miss you and hope to find a way to keep you in the folds of the organization in some way that makes a lot of sense for you and for the people of the state. So before I hand the mic over to you, I think I'd like to ask any of the trustees who would like to share something. If you feel so inclined, please do so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I instantly felt a connection with Sonia, and we definitely bonded over shared love of travel and all things fashionable and everything like that. So you brought a sense of flair and style to the board that we have never seen and probably won't see going forward. But yeah, just your insight into the many financial issues that we've discussed and just the complex things that you've handled while on this board really speaks to your level of commitment. We thank you for your public service, and are really sad to see you go, but wish you all the best.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Hello, Sonia. Jose Cisneros here. I've been honored to serve with you, particularly as one of the non-attorney colleagues on the board. It's been great to be able to share conversations, and I will miss our opportunities to share Zoom calls in the San Francisco State Bar office.
Thank you, Trustee Cisneros. Trustee Selig.
Well, Sonia, I had a similar reaction when I heard the news. I was very upset, and I'm really going to miss you, and we're losing part of our San Francisco contingent to the board, but it's always a pleasure to see you and enjoy hanging around with you, and also really appreciate your service to the board and especially on financial matters. Your input has been very valuable, so we're really going to miss you.
Thank you, Trustee Selig. Trustee Shelby, please.
Sonia, you are a consummate professional, and I have just thoroughly enjoyed the time that I have spent with you in board meetings and then outside of the board as well. So I'm not going to say goodbye. I'm going to say goodbye as it relates to board service, but I feel like we're going to be connected for quite some time. And when I heard of your departure, I was saddened because I think you bring an incredible voice, and I look forward to seeing how the Chair integrates you back into the State Bar family. But thank you for your wisdom, your guidance, and your leadership.
Thank you, Trustee Shelby. Trustee Tony, and then Chen, please.
Thank you. Sonia, I really appreciated serving with you on the committee that interviewed the State Bar court judges, and I really appreciated you kind of walking me through some of the ropes because I was new this year. This was my first time, and you had been doing this for several years, and I appreciated you introducing me to the other members of the committee and just, you know, showing me support as I was learning that. I hope to live up to your legacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Chen.
Sonia, we'll really miss your voice here on the board. You were sworn in not that long after I was, when I was still trying to learn the ropes and figure out all the acronyms and how the State Bar worked and getting my arms around everything, and I was really struck by the unique perspective that you brought as a public member of the board. I remember when you started sharing your insights and from your financial background, really sitting up and recognizing like, oh, this is why we have public members of the board. And so we'll really miss your voice, Sonia. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Trustee De La Cruz.
Yeah. So when I first started, walking into this room, it was really daunting, right? All attorneys, and I'm thinking, wow, this is going to be tough for me. But she made it very easy for me. She helped my transition into the board. We had several conversations when we sat on, I forget, the committee together. We voted yes and no on certain matters, and she was always great about it. So you will be missed. I appreciate your professionalism and everything you brought to the board here, and you will be missed. So congratulations on, I don't know what you're moving on to, but congratulations.
Thank you, Trustee De La Cruz. We do have two trustees on the screen. Gentlemen, please feel free to chime in. Do not feel that you must.
Sonia, this is Arnie. I just wanted to say, I too was, oh, kind of miffed to hear of your departure, and as Jose and others have mentioned, as a fellow public member of this body, your voice will be missed. I have always really appreciated the perspective that you have brought to the board, because of your tenure on the board, the history, the institutional memory that you have brought to many of the issues have been very, very helpful to me, as well as just your overall just sort of calm and demeanor as it relates to some of the rough and tumble things that we've had to sort of deal with. So I just appreciate your service to this body, and I hope that our paths will continue to connect. Thank you, and thank you so much, Sonia.
Thank you, Trustee Sol. So you're not in the room, Sonia, but I can tell you that there's a lot of good energy here for you and a lot of eagerness in your colleagues in expressing what I think is a universally held high regard for you and appreciation for all the work that you've done. So we certainly wish you were here with us in person, but as several folks have said, we hope to see you again soon. Ms. Wilson, would you like to add?
I think my comments, I'm really going to drop to what Hyland said because I feel that, Sonia, you came on as a public member when we were first really figuring out what public members were to the bar. I think it was the time of great transition for the organization. We were separating and becoming a purely regulatory agency, and you were really instrumental in lifting up the public voice and emphasizing the importance of thinking about the public and the consumer at a time when I think that was harder to do on the board than it is now. So I want to recognize you for that. And you're also an incredibly kind and gracious person and caring person, and I think it's really wonderful to see women. You obviously have a very powerful leadership role with Bank of America. You're traveling all over the world all the time, as we know, doing these huge deals, and yet you're warm and caring and thoughtful, and so I really just want to recognize that and appreciate it, and I will miss you.
Thank you. Thank you. Chair?
I believe that we have a resolution prepared, and Sonia, I'm going to ask you to hold on just for a little bit more because I do want folks to see in black and white the embodiment in words of some of the sentiment that we have here. And if you will permit me, I'm going to read the resolution so that folks know exactly what we're talking about. Whereas Sonia Dellen, member of the Board of Trustees, served this board and the State Bar of California with devotion and distinction. Whereas a member of the Board of Trustees, Sonia served this board and the state of California with extraordinary commitment to carrying out the mission of public protection, including access and diversity and inclusion, and served the board and the State Bar selflessly and with constancy. It is therefore resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby expresses to Sonia Dellen, member of the Board of Trustees, its sincere appreciation for her admirable accomplishments and efforts expended on behalf of the public that we serve. Is there a motion on that resolution?
Cis Stallings, salute.
Motion by Stallings, second by De La Cruz. May we have the vote?
Bratton, absent. Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Aye.
De La Cruz?
Yes.
Noel? Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Thank you. Selig?
Yes.
Shelby?
A resounding aye, yes.
Sol?
Aye.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Aye.
Thank you.
It is unanimous, and if I had a vote, I would give it as well. Thank you, Sonia. Would you? We would love to hear your voice.
Thank you, Chairman Duran. And yes, indeed, we started that same day back in 2018. Thank you so much for your, you know, most generous words, kind words, and I feel the same way with each and every one of you. But let me express my deepest appreciation and gratitude to the State Bar of California, the Office of the Governor for this honor and privilege, and to each one of you and the senior leadership and staff of the bar. It has been a really great honor, a huge honor for me to have served as a non-lawyer public member, and our state is blessed to have legal leaders and amazing public members whose professionalism, excellence, and unparalleled integrity, and I know this for that, the impound integrity are at the core of public service. I admire and respect the integrity, dedication, the first purposeful and mindfulness in the deliberation and implementation of policies, in collaborating with our stakeholders, and our efforts in diversifying the legal profession. I really, so I am in awe of every, and each of the members, the trustees, each of the trustee, the integrity is beyond reproach and the dedication to the public. And I am so proud to have been a voice of Asian-Americans, of women as a corporate officer, and more passionately Filipino-Americans. So again, thank you. It has been an honor and privilege to serve the state and to work with each one of you. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Sonia. Godspeed. We look forward to hearing what happens next in the chapter of what I'm sure will be continued service to the state on your behalf. So thank you. All right. I'm going to move on to, I've got a few items here. Trustee Chen gave a prelude to the next announcement I'd like to make, and that is that given the, I think by now, complete shift and understanding that the Board of Trustees as a whole has a critical role to play in the discipline system here at the State Bar and in the oversight of that disciplinary system through the Office of the Chief Trial Counsel, we have made the decision at a leadership level, there hasn't been any official board action, but I'm announcing today that the Regulation and Discipline Committee as it stood will essentially be dissolved to become a committee of the whole, such that all, hopefully soon, 13 members of the Board of Trustees can have an active and meaningful voice in what is indeed our primary mission, which is protection of the public and oversight of the disciplinary system. I know that individual trustees, whether or not on RAD, have had a very productive and auspicious beginning of a relationship with a new general, excuse me, a new chief trial counsel as finally approved by the state senate, and so I think the timing is very good for this move. I look forward to the continued hard work of each of the members of the Board of Trustees. The special thanks to trustees Chen and Cisneros for their leadership of RAD over the past year, trustees Selig and Stallings for their most recent before that leadership, and again, all of you in the oversight of our disciplinary function. So that's an announcement. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any, but if not, then we will see agendas coming in front of you that include disciplinary oversight, and I think just a continued robust role for the Board to play in the public protection mission of this organization. I got it on my phone, I'm sorry. The, I'm going to announce that the Review Committee for the Commission on Judicial Nominees Liaisons will continue to be trustees Bratton and Cisneros. Do no in small, in no small part to trustee Shelby's prompting this morning. I will announce that trustee Stallings will assist her in the appointments liaison functions. I have appointed, or am hereby appointing trustee Knowles to the Finance Committee, and I've asked trustee Knowles and trustee Tony to take on a liaison function with respect to discipline now, so they will assist trustees Chen and Cisneros as we make the transition to the board, being a committee of the whole on essentially what used to be RAD. I have asked trustee Selig to allow me to join him as a litigation liaison because I just don't have enough to do. And that is all the announcements I will make on appointments at this point. I really do appreciate all the work that each of you does, separate and apart from these board meetings every other month. It's quite an undertaking, and I recognize that you are all volunteers in service to your community, so thank you for that continued work. We have a resolution on at least one of these appointments, I believe it is, to the Finance Committee, which is the only appointment that requires approval by the board. So if there are no questions, Mr. Knowles, if you'd like to say something, this would be the appropriate time?
Well, I'm really looking forward to serving the public and the attorney population in this role, and I enjoy the executive committee and the, I'm sure I will as well, the Finance Committee. That's always a very important committee on any board, and I appreciate that you have trusted me. I'm sorry that I never got to really meet and talk with and learn from Sonia. I think the most important thing on boards and directors are public folks who just think in a different way possibly about problems that we have and solutions there, too. But thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I appreciate your faith in me. I hope I don't let you down.
Thank you, trustee Noel. I'm sure it's well placed. Is there a motion on the resolution, please?
Stallings, salute.
Motion by Stallings?
Yes.
Second by Shelby. May I have a vote?
Bratton, absent. Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Aye.
De La Cruz?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes, yes.
Selig?
Yes.
Shelby?
Aye.
Sol?
I'm an aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays, one absent. The motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. For those of you who've been around for a while, you'll remember that September is traditionally, our September board meeting is traditionally bifurcated, and the first day is usually the last day of the outgoing Chair's tenure, as it were, and the Friday is the first day of the new Chair's tenure. This is the first time in recent memory where that's not going to be happening this time. I am pleased to report to you all that trustee Stallings and I have been reappointed by the Supreme Court to continue to serve in the roles that we've served over the past 12 months. That's very kind, thank you. And so as fortune would have it, the Chief Justice was present at the annual conference of the California Lawyers Association and California Judges Association last weekend in San Diego, and she was kind enough to invite Brandon and myself to be there present as she swore in the new leadership of each of those organizations. It was a joint swearing-in ceremony. Brandon and I were there, my wife Cynthia was there with me, and it was a nice, it was a nice brief moment of being in a room with many incredible leaders in the legal profession, and to see them all there and to hear the Chief Justice offer what are always inspiring words was truly a joy for me, and so I want to thank her and the Supreme Court for their faith in me. I'll let Brandon offer his own thanks.
It was a bittersweet moment, knowing that this was kind of the last swearing-in with the current Chief Justice. She has been an inspirational figure in many of our lives, especially in the legal profession here in California, and so it was a very special honor to be sworn in by her. I will look forward to the new Chief Justice taking office in January and continuing to work with the Supreme Court and keep advancing the, you know, these, advancing the ball on these issues. And I really want to thank the Supreme Court for further instilling their trust in Ruben and myself to try and make the best decisions possible.
Thank you, Brandon. For those of you who've met the Chief Justice and heard her speak, I think you know and you'll agree that she's always inspiring, she's always very, very insightful and spot-on with her remarks, and it, as I sat there last Saturday, it called to mind for me some remarks that, the remarks that she gave when Sonia and I were sworn in and Jason Lee was sworn in as the Chair that year. And the Chief Justice talked about storming, forming, and norming, storming, forming, and norming. And she was talking about the transition that the State Bar at that time was finally sort of finishing, right? The break from the CLA and the formation of the new, not the new, but the new focus on discipline for the State Bar, and I believe that we are fully in the area of norming, normalizing how this organization functions, and it's due in no small part to, I think, her leadership and her inspiration and the hard work of Leah and the entire staff here at the State Bar. So I really sort of took some great solace in that, okay, now we're norming, let's go do some more good stuff. So that is what I look forward to for the coming year. I do want to just, again, say thank you to the Speaker of the Assembly, Anthony Rendon, for appointing me for the first time four years ago. It's been an honor to serve, and it will be an honor to continue to serve. On the further news front, you may have noticed that Governor Newsom signed our fee bill, I think on Saturday or Sunday, it may have been over the weekend. AB 2958 is now law, and we have our marching orders with respect to our revenue expectations and other things, and so we look forward to continuing the work of the bar as it relates and is impacted by our legislative partners. Certainly thank all of you who have done some work and along those lines, which, as we know, is important to, important to the policy framework that we discuss and our initiatives moving forward. So thank you for your continued efforts there. Just making sure I've got nothing else. Just a point of personal privilege to, I think I said yes to the Chief Justice before I asked my wife, but she was very supportive, as she always is, and I truly do love and appreciate Cynthia Duran and my two boys, Diego and Nicholas Duran. Okay, that is it. Okay, that is it for the Chair's report. Let's move on. Takes us to the Executive Director's oral report.
Yes. And I, I just briefly will say that I was really pleased to hear that Ruben and Brandon were being reappointed, not just because I, I like these guys, but also because of what it represents for the organization. I think it is part of that norming. And for what it also represents vis-à-vis the committees and the overall structure of the Board, I think it represents constancy and continuity. And I think that is so important in terms of your ability to truly exercise effective oversight of this organization. When folks are always changing roles and positions, it's hard to do that. And so I'm, I'm excited about it. And I'm excited about the change to the Discipline Committee being a committee of the full Board. And just look forward to supporting you in this upcoming year and helping you to oversee me, all of your other direct reports and the, and the organization as a whole. And then I wanted to use a little bit of my time for Luisa to introduce our latest permanent member to the ED office. So go ahead.
Yes, thank you. As, some of you may have already met Alfredo Hernandez, sitting right next to me, but not all of you have, so I wanted to formally introduce. He, he recently joined the State Bar, I want to say two months ago? Yeah, two months ago, as a program analyst. And he's doing mostly board support amongst other things, and we're super excited to have him. And he will be obviously in contact with all of you, so we'll be expecting to hear from him and see him more often.
We still have Elizabeth out doing her training and development program with us, so she's, she's still around as well.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you all so much for having welcomed me into this space and for being so warm and inviting. I know you will be getting a lot of emails from me with a lot of questions on tight deadlines, but I apologize in advance, and I'm just really excited to, to be in this capacity, to be able to help you ensure that you all are able to do your work to the best of ability, to serve the State Bar, to serve the people of California. Thank you all so much.
Welcome, Alfredo. We look forward to working with you. And Luisa, thank you for your leadership of, of, of the, all the work that you do here for us on the Board. That takes us to the consent calendar, item 50, 50 dash 1 through 10. Does any member of the Board of Trustees want to ask any questions about any of the consent items or pool one for separate discussion? Don't see anybody on the screen. Folks here in the room look like we're good. May I have a motion, please?
Go.
Was that Noel?
Yes. All right.
Motion by Noel. May I have a second? Stallings with the second. May we have the vote, please?
Bratton, absent. Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Knowles?
Yes.
Seleg?
Yes.
Shelby?
Aye.
Sol?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays, one absent, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Item 701 is a discussion regarding the final report and recommendations of the Ad Hoc Commission on the Discipline System. This is, this is, I'm sure, quite the culmination of a lot of time and effort. And before I hand it over to Vice Chair Stallings and Lisa Chavez, I, I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for all the work from the many dozens of people who contributed to this effort. I don't know who's going first.
All right, Lisa, okay there. All right, so I'll be introducing the topic and giving kind of a, a 30,000-foot view, look at what the Commission worked on. And then Lisa's going to follow it up with some of the specific items that we'll be asking the Board to take action on later on down the road. So it's on the agenda today for receiving the report and then also releasing for public comment. So I look forward to any questions and comments on how we can make sure that this final report is the best possible report put forth by the State Bar. But really, this, this undertaking really started with Sean Seleg. Sean, which I think he just left. Okay. All right, well, I'll talk, I'll talk good about him to his face as well as behind his back. But Sean commissioned the Ad Hoc Commission, and this was really in response to several things that the State Bar decided to take on. And really, it was the work of Leah Wilson in commissioning certain studies on disparities in the discipline system. And so we have a lot to thank Leah for in her visioneering and pointing the, the Bar in the right direction. And then entrusting the Ad Hoc Commission to look at these issues in depth and hopefully bring some actionable items before the Board of Trustees. The Ad Hoc Commission was comprised, and for all you trial attorneys out there, you know, a jury is composed of 12 members, and we had 26 members. So if you've ever put on a jury trial, you know that convincing 12 people beyond a reasonable doubt or, or whatever burden of proof you're under, it's, it's a challenge. And then having 26 that show up for meetings is also an incredible challenge. So staff is to be commended for wrangling everybody in the, in the right direction. And so Justin Ewer was involved in this project for a long, long time, and so was Lisa. So it's really through their hard work and dedication that we're actually even here today. So, but getting those 26 individuals together and really confronting the issue of, of having a discipline system that not only is effective, not only protects the public, but also keeps issues of equity and fairness in mind, was a constant tension that the, the Commission struggled with. And so I think you'll see some of that in the, the actions that were, or the, the different things that the Commission looked at, and then some of the, the steps forward. So if, if you've been on the Board for any sort of a time, you're familiar with the Farcus Report, and that was a report that was authored that addressed racial disparities in the discipline system. And in that report, it was brought to light that there are factors that correlated with race and were statistically significant predictors of discipline in several different things, a number of prior complaints, and then rates of counsel representation. So in order to address some of these issues that were brought up by, by the Farcus Report, we invited Professor Robertson to explore possible remedies. And Professor Robertson really delivered on that. He delivered 13 potential reforms, and this is back in 2020. And if you want to look at some of those in depth, that's page 76. But what I thought was really important was that his recommendations really dovetailed nicely with steps that Office of Chief Trial Counsel had already started to take to ensure fairness and effectiveness in the discipline system. And a couple of these things that we've undertaken, we're archiving 400,000 cases that were more than five years old and closed without disciplinary action. We also modified letters that were sent out as instructional letters, and we tried to really get ahead of, ahead of misconduct and write letters to inform individuals of steps they could take to avoid basically getting in trouble. The significant number of reforms that have been implemented in, in recent years, some are in response to the report, but many, like I said, OCTC had already been putting in place. And this is really thanks to Steve Moad and Melanie Lawrence. And even though these, these reforms have been, had been put in place for at least several years, we haven't really had a chance to really catalog them and not only look at how effective they were, but really tell the world what the State Bar had been doing in, as far as advancing the ball in areas of equity and fairness, as well as effectiveness in the discipline system. So to that end, in reviewing what steps the State Bar had been taking, the Commission received numerous updates from State Bar staff on the recent changes and trends, and notably the reportable bank action items, and then the proactive measures such as the resource, resource letters that were sent out to, to inform attorneys of how they could avoid committing misconduct and creating victims. One of the other things that the Ad Hoc Commission looked at were, what was this concern of sole practitioners and a focus on sole practitioners and how there was disproportionate look, looking at sole practitioners as people who committed misconduct. We, as the Ad Hoc Commission, did all this in a, in a desire to ensure that the discipline system is efficient, effective, and fair. And to break that up, we formed two committees. There was an effectiveness committee that looked at case processing, standardization and consistency, factors impacting case settlement, prevention efforts and attorney support, metrics, and diversion programs. There was a fairness subcommittee that looked at bias in complaint processes, communication with complaining witnesses during intake, costs associated with discipline costs, expungement, perception of State Bar court independence, and prior complaints. So we took inventory of these discipline system reforms, and really we had an eye on, you know, out of these 16,000 complaints that we receive annually, see, we, we wanted to see what reforms have been implemented to potentially impact those areas of fairness and effectiveness. And you can read all about that in the report. Again, 120-page report, which is pretty light in comparison to some of the reports I've read, but still, it's a weighty tome. Again, we owe staff a lot in compiling that. We wanted to evaluate the impact of the various reforms. I thought there was an interesting discussion on the Alternative Discipline Program and Agreement in Lieu of Discipline as far as recidivism. Those statistics can be found on page 25. And really, this is kind of like, again, a broad overview of what we looked at, but it was all with the eye of recommending additional, additional reforms and revised reforms. And to walk us through some of those potential areas, and again, this is going to be released for public comment. We'll receive the public comment back and then have some concrete action items later on in 2023. But I do, I do want to hand it over to Lisa to talk, talk the Board through what some of those additional areas are. So Lisa.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for that introduction, Brandon, to the Ad Hoc Commission's work. Can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. So I just want to thank Brandon for his leadership on this role, on this important commission. And again, thank you for acknowledging the work of Justin Ewer in this work. I had started the Commission as the lead staff, and then Justin took over, and I'm the closer. So I'm happy to share with you today a little bit about the work, a little bit more detail with regards to how the Commission did its work. And then I'm going to give just an overview of the recommendations that the Commissioner adopted. As Brandon mentioned, the agenda item has the, the final report of the Commission that's attached there. And the purpose of that report is to really illuminate the work that this Commission did. Our goal was to really take you, the reader, into the works, the other Commission's deliberations. And you can see, we really took paint to really explain and, and show all the issues that they explored and really the debates that they had. And so we're looking forward to any feedback you may have on the report. Okay, so how the Commission did its work? Well, Brandon stated, firstly, in the, in the way that they reviewed the entire catalog of reforms that have been adopted in the recent years, they received that information primarily through very comprehensive presentations from State Bar staff. And I'd like to thank the staff that participated, participated in these presentations and really delivered all the very detailed information that the Commission needed. So they reviewed information such as initiative policies and procedures, what the background was on those, what were the, what are the different codes and regulations that have led to certain procedures and initiatives that we have in place. They also really received a comprehensive presentation on the State Bar's implementation of reforms that are meant to address racial disparities, as Brandon mentioned. And they also received an update from Leah, Ms. Wilson, and Chief Trial Counsel on State Bar's plans to address recommendations from the 2022 audit, as well as the Committee on Special Audit. So that's a big picture of the types of presentations that they received and how they received their information. This Commission also commissioned new empirical analyses. So as they identified topics that they wanted to get deep dives on, staff, you know, they asked for certain data points. If data wasn't available, my staff in the Office of Research and International Accountability scrambled to produce those analyses. Sometimes those analyses were pretty straightforward, in other words, and other times they were very, very comprehensive analyses that were amounted to many studies. And I'm really proud of my staff for standing and delivering, often under tight deadlines. And Jerry Larkin, who's a member of the Commission, who's actually the Bar Administrator of Illinois, who was on the Commission, described that research of the State Bar as cutting edge. And I can't tell you how proud I was to hear those words that day. So they reviewed and commissioned new empirical analyses. We also provided practices of other California regulatory agencies with regards to specific topics. And they also reviewed practices of other jurisdictions across the, the country. So that's how the Commission did its work, as Brandon said, that they started off forming two subcommittees that then narrowed down into several working groups that were formed to produce recommendations. And now I'm going to turn to the recommendations that were adopted. So the first set of recommendations has to do with discipline costs. The background is here, which is that there's, you know, there's code work that instructs State Bar to recover costs associated with discipline, and there's also code that requires State Bar to adopt rules to impose monetary sanctions. And so the Commission learned that State Bar's discipline costs are higher than those assessed by other State Bars and compared with regulatory agencies within the state, that no other jurisdiction, based on our research, reports imposing monetary sanctions in addition to disciplinary costs. There was concern that high costs can impact the ability of an attorney to return to practice, and that will impede rehabilitation. And they also noted that attorneys were already penalized for contesting charges. So for example, the cost for one-day trials at the State Bar are more, more than two times higher than cost for matters that settle prior to filing of an NDC. And so this was raised as an issue of fairness. And so the recommendation adopted was this one, to reevaluate the current discipline cost model with a focus on reducing costs, and this includes, but not limited to restructuring the cost structures, so that attorneys are not penalized for going to trial and scaling fees when charges are just heard of Smith. And then a second recommendation is to actually seek a statutory amendment to eliminate disciplinary sanction. Next set of recommendations has to do with, actually, two topics that are related, and there are one recommendation flowed from these two topics. The first has to do with the topic of attorney discipline on the State Bar website. So the background to this is that the code requires that the State Bar provides the public with attorney discipline records. Now, the State Bar has chosen to facilitate the public's access to this by posting attorney's public discipline history on the licensee's profile pages of the State Bar website. Now, the Commission discussed the fact that, first and foremost, there's no statutory rule or requirement for posting on the State Bar website. So again, the State Bar has chosen to facilitate access by this. There's no time limit for how long information is going to be posted, unlike the Medical Board of California. So information is really posted in perpetuity. And finally, you know, there was concern that lack of time limits can have adverse effects on attorneys for many years after satisfying their disciplinary requirements. And here, they heard public comments, in particular for one attorney who talked about how, you know, nearly a decade after receiving discipline, someone Googles his name and this discipline comes up, and he feels this impeded his ability to find work. Related to this is the issue of expungement of the attorney, attorney's discipline records. And the background here is that there's code that states that the State Bar shall expunge the records as directed by the Supreme Court, but there's no process in place for attorneys in the Supreme Court. The State Bar, and so Commission members believed that, and here, they reviewed current criminal justice trends in California, that the State Bar should be aligned with those trends, which is to expunge records after a period of time. And the belief was, is that, or rather, the motivation for going down this road is that, you know, record expungement would begin to address historical racial disparities in attorney discipline. That was illuminated in the Farcus research. And so the Commission looked at these two issues together and adopted the following recommendation. They adopted timeframes for removal of attorney discipline from the website and expungement of attorney discipline records. And so here's, and so these timeframes and associated disciplines and associated timeframe are for both of these topics. And so here's the list for the, for, you know, goes from private approval down to disbarment. And again, applies to both of them. And I have a note here that says that the discipline record expungement, that piece will require a statutory change. So the recommendation is for the, for the Board of Trustees to adopt these timelines, but acknowledging that the record, the discipline record expungement timeline, any timeline associated with that would require a statutory change. The Commission also explored the topic of the Early Neutral Evaluation Conference. Now, this is a settlement conference that is offered to respondents before filing a notice of disciplinary charges. And the purpose of this is to, for all parties, to obtain a judicial evaluation of the case. OCTC is not bound OCTC is not bound to follow a judge's judicial evaluation. And code requires that OCTC transmit criminal conviction cases to the state bar review department within 30 days of receipt if it determines that the case may or may not involve moral interpretive. I bring that up because in the discussion of the ENEC, people were, some members were concerned that there's no opportunity really for people who are faced discipline for a criminal conviction charge to be, have their cases settled in an ENEC due to this requirement for OCTC to submit within 30 days. And so their concern was that, one, it's fair for, it would be fair for respondents to have this option, but also they pointed out that this could possibly lead to cost savings for the attorney and the state bar if cases got settled in an ENEC, criminal conviction cases, misdemeanors in particular, versus going up to state bar court. And again, they noticed that the statute timeline doesn't allow for efficient time for an ENEC to be offered. So the recommendation is, is to seek a statutory amendment to extend the deadline for the transmission of criminal conviction matters in misdemeanor cases, and that was very intentional to identify this, limited to misdemeanor cases, to allow for an ENEC. Uh, next, the group, another working group took on the topic of moral interpretive. Now, moral interpretive defined in the business professional code as follows. I'm not going to read it out, but ultimately, it has to do with the commission of any act of any moral interpretive, dishonesty, corruption, et cetera. Um, constitutes a cause for disbarment or suspension. OCTC staff gave a comprehensive presentation on this topic and really shared that these cases tend to be the most contested ones that the state bar faces. A respondent can be charged with moral interpretive as either an original matter or when OCTC seeks discipline for criminal conviction. And attorneys who are disciplined for moral interpretive are ineligible for participation in the alternative discipline program. And so when the working group raised this, discussed this topic, several shared that they felt that the system would benefit from a process, again, similar to the topic about the ENEC, to, again, to resolve these misdemeanor criminal cases before transmitted to state bar court. And currently, there's no rule that allows for this. Other people, other members pointed out that in their experience, there's ambiguity within state bar rules with regards to referrals to the ADP. So like I said, that there's, there's rules that outline how, who's ineligible for ADP, but they've noticed that there's two rules in particular that seem to be in conflict with each other. And so they recommended exploring that. And then finally, others note, again, going back to the ENEC, OCTC is not bound to follow judges' evaluations during the ENEC process, even those that raise concerns regarding the lack of evidence to support a moral interpretive charge. And so, uh, this, again, people are sharing their experience with the process, right? And so they believe that the ENEC process as a whole should be reviewed as a result of that. And so here, they had three recommendations. And I won't read them out, I'm going to just paraphrase them. But the first is to work, for you all, to direct staff to work with stakeholders to study all possible revisions with regards to what it would take to conduct a pre-transmital meeting similar to an ENEC to deal with misdemeanor criminal, criminal convictions. Next is to direct staff to work with stakeholders to study and clarify all rules involving referrals to the alternative discipline program. And then next is to direct staff to work with stakeholders to propose revisions to all applicable rules to promote the use of ENECs of the mechanism for arriving, for arriving at prefiled settlements of the state bar proceedings. Those are the three recommendations with regards to moral interpretive. Next, the commission took on the topic of progressive discipline. And the background here is that state bar has standards in place that were put in place to promote consistency and discipline proceeding. And that there is discipline, that discipline would always be progressive. That is multiple disciplines. Here are the two standards that the two, that the group, the working group explored. One has to do with mitigating circumstances, and the other has to do with really outlining this, this progressive discipline charge. And their concern was is that prior discipline may be the result of disparities in the discipline system. And they also expressed concern that the standard, particularly standard 1.8A really prevents a lack of judicial discretion, and that's preventing judges from reducing the impact of prior discipline on current outcomes. And so the recommendation is for the board of trustees to analyze the modified standards 1.6 and 1.8 to permit the greater use of exercise of judicial discretion regarding progressive discipline. And the last recommendation has to do with attorney discipline representation. Again, this just, this addresses findings in the Farkas report, which is that that research found that racial disparities, research on racial disparities and representation, that is, having, have, for our, for attorneys facing discipline to be represented by their own attorney during discipline proceedings, that was one factor that explained the racial disparities that we see in the research. And so the, the commission, the working group, sorry, the whole commission explored different options that staff presented. And in particular, they received a presentation from state bar court with regards to the state bar appointed counsel program. Uh, for those of you who don't know, the state bar, for a kind of, kind of appointed counsel program, appoints counsel to respondents whenever a licensee asserts a claim of mental insanity or mental incompetence, or the state bar court itself finds that the licensee is unable to perform competently due to mental infirmity or illness. And so they literally learned about that program, and then they debated the pros and cons of coming up with a attorney representation program that would serve all attorneys, um, paying that program first, you know, attorneys to represent other attorneys, an hourly versus flat fee. So they debated the pros and cons of such a program. But they've made it clear that the people who would be receiving this access to the service would be those who qualified for reduced licensing fees. And so this year, that is 65,500 gross income. So those attorneys with that level income who've already shown that, that they have that income as proof that they, that they prepare, that they pay reduced licensing fees, they would be the ones who could have access to such a representation program that the state bar provides. And so the recommendation is for the board of trustees to implement a state bar appointed counsel program based on an hourly rate structure. They decided that would be the best way to proceed. And it would be similar to the 60, 67th quarter pointing council, which is state bar program I just described. Okay, so those are the recommendations. I'm going to turn it back over to Brandon to talk about our next steps.
All right, thank you, Lisa. So providing that the board of trustees receives the report today and sends it out for public comment, the ad hoc commission is planning on meeting in December to review public comment and then modify the recommendations as needed based upon that, that public input. And then we anticipate bringing this back before the board of trustees in January of next year, January 2023, in order for the full board to receive updated recommendations, if any, and then also receive the public comment and take any appropriate actions. So, um, you know, reserve your hotel for January 2023 because it'll be a fun discussion. Uh, but I want to turn it now over to Mr. Duran and see if there's any questions or input.
Thank you, Vice Chair Stallings. Thank you, Lisa Chavez. That was a really thorough and great report. Any members of the board of trustees have any questions at this point? I see trustee Shelby indicating yes.
Um, thank you. That was really helpful. I know one of my first board meetings was, um, we were identifying who was going to sit on the commission. And at that point in time, we realized that there were no African-American men. And so to see the progress of where we are now going out for public comment is really exciting. I guess my question is, and I've never asked this question, but my question is, what does that look like? So it's out for public comment, I guess, for 45 days or 60 days, 90 days? Is it sent to particular organizations? How are you eliciting that response? Is there a targeted group that's identified? I would love to understand that.
Yeah, I'll answer that because it's something we've been working on. Traditionally, out for public comment has meant that we posted on our website. And I think maybe folks who have affirmatively signed up to get notices from us, therefore, learn that there's something out for public comment. And we might put it in a few other emails. That's historic. In the last year or so, we've done a lot of work to issue things more broadly for public comment. So here, we've already talked about the need to elicit broad public comment. So that means there will be a social media campaign. We want to hear from consumers and from lawyers, right? Because I think those are two groups that may feel differently about these recommendations. It's easy for us to reach the California licensee population. We have everybody's email address. The public is harder. But we will use a social media, and then we will reach out to all of the legal organizations. The social media primarily to reach the public. So that's, that's what we have on tap.
I, I would, um, in support of that, I would also recommend that organizations like the NAACP, so civic organizations like that, that would reach out to them, and also some of your legislative caucuses as it relates to the California Black Caucus and other organizations like that, because I think they will have the opportunity to, to aid in, in touching public and consumers outside of the affinity groups and organizations.
Great suggestions.
Trustee Chen.
Um, I have to say, I was particularly struck by the dissenting opinions that were included in the discussion packet, particularly from Steve Moat and Melanie Lawrence about the expungement recommendation. Um, and the particular issues they raised, I think, warrant further looking into, even before we get a return from public comment. It really does implicate some public protection concerns, the differences, especially that Steve pointed out between what we're, you know, we're sort of conflating expungement and taking things off of the website, whether something is still publicly available, even if you take it off the website, I think does require further scrutiny. And so I, I'm wondering whether we can do that work and analysis even before we wait for public comment to come back.
Yeah, I don't see why we can't.
Thank you. Trustee Tony looks like.
Thank you. Um, I, I have a few comments on this one. My first question is, it would be helpful for me because I read very carefully about moral interpretive. And it's a great literary term, but I have no clue what it actually means. No, no, I honestly don't. It, it sounds like it has a specific legal meaning that I don't know. So tell me what moral interpretive means, because I don't know, honestly.
So the most common definition is a readiness to do evil, which, that's one that I routinely run across. And so generally, readiness to do evil.
Sorry, I'm only laughing because there's just so much case law on it. And I think it just, there's so many different ways to define it and no real agreement. So it's a great question. We'd all love to know the answer.
Yeah, exactly. Do you want to, do you want to expound on that, or should I let, go to trustee Suleg? Trustee Suleg, please.
I like Brandon's definition the best, but, um, generally speaking, in the attorney context, it has to do with fraud, deceit, sneak, you know, theft, sneaky things like that. I believe it's been applied to certain sexual abuse crimes in the attorney discipline context. That's much more unusual, I think. But it's right, there's a huge body of case law on it, but, um, but usually it's fraud or deceit in, for attorney discipline purposes.
Okay.
And just to give you a couple of practical examples. So let's say possession of drugs is normally not considered to be moral interpretive, just like driving under the influence. You might have factors, though, within those investigations that could indicate some sort of fraud. Let's say if there's misleading statements that the, that the licensee gives during the investigation. So there are, there are a lot of nuances to this issue of moral interpretive. On, on its face, there are certain crimes that are absolutely moral interpretive, and then some require a little bit more investigation.
Okay, thank you. Um, if, if I can do a couple more, so, so, um, maybe this isn't the place, but I have to say, I don't like the idea of private approvals. I don't believe they should exist. And would this review be a place where we could talk about why they should exist? And maybe discuss, explore the possibility of eliminating them? I think that any discipline should be public, or else it's not disciplined. So I don't, I've never understood the term private approval. It sounds like something that is hidden.
Certainly, I think that is, has been and will continue to be a part of conversations when it comes back up to the board. And interesting to see whether members of the public have similar observations as, as does this one public member, certainly. But so, to answer your question, this is probably not the, the best time because it will come back to us for.
When it comes back, that's what I meant for this.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I don't intend, just like, you know, to get into substantive discussion. It's more exploring pieces in advance, so I know what's on the table, what's not on the table.
I think it's very helpful.
And, and the other one has to do with this issue of what, what I understand, and we've talked about before, what happens with closed complaints? And it, and it's just the matter, my understanding is that if an attorney has a complaint against them, unless it moves forward in the process, it can be investigated, it can be closed, and it's possible that an attorney will never know that anybody has filed a complaint against them. That's what I understand can be the case. And I just wonder if part of what we're trying to do is, you know, this issue of prevention, right? We've been talking a lot about prevention. If it might be of use for an attorney just to know, even if it was closed, okay, that you had a complaint, it was about this topic, we didn't find it had merit, but there's value to you knowing. So that's just something that, you know, that I was, hope would be on the table. If it's not, let me know.
So I think in the, in the report, that issue is addressed. It was a topic considered, I can't remember by which subcommittee, the specific issue of whether attorney should be noticed every time there is a complaint received about them. Um, I think there is some discussion about that in the report. I believe that, and George is here, but I think that every time a case moves from intake to investigation, the attorney would be noticed. It is not all cases that close in intake, but George can clarify. And then there are now some cases where there is a complaint, even if it's closed in intake, the attorney does receive notice. He can clarify the current status of those issues. But I know that the commission declined to make recommendations in this area because there were some concerns about unintended negative consequences for respondents if they are noticed of a complaint, for example, with their malpractice insurance carriers. So I think if you want to take this up as, as a board, it may not be in response to public comment, but rather something that you want to agendize to consider further because it's not a recommendation that's going out for public comment. But sorry, George, if I bungled that.
No, that's essentially right. If complaints are moved to investigation and they get to the point where the investigation is going to proceed, typically, a letter is sent to the attorney to make an inquiry about the allegations to give them an opportunity to respond. But the largest number of our complaints are closed in intake. Right. And those typically, an attorney will not get notice of unless we decide that it's appropriate to send either a, what are called directional letters or resource letters, where we advise them, advise the attorney of things they could do to prevent similar allegations from occurring in the future, or on occasion, providing them with a direction, you know, look, please do this, and if you do this, we won't proceed. For example, return a file or call your client.
Right.
But there are a large number of complaints that do get closed without any notice to the attorney, often because they're simply found to be frivolous.
Thank you. Thank you all. Sean, is there something you wanted to add to this, or?
Uh, no, I don't think so. I think it's been fully vetted.
Any other questions from the trustees?
That's all I have now. Thank you.
Looks like we lost trustee Noel, or maybe he just went off video? Okay. If there are no other questions from the trustees, let me, let me, if I could, just take the point of personal privilege to, to thank you, Sean, for, for commissioning this commission, for starting it during your tenure as a chair. And, and, and you gave me the opportunity to chair this commission for a little while. And, and Brandon's right, the 26 people and the multiple staff members and, and interested academics and, and others really did bring quite a bit of expertise and, and hard work, elbow grease, as it were, to the table. And so I look, I look forward to seeing what the public has to say about the work that's been produced, and then ultimately to further conversations among the 13 of us here to see, you know, how we can better improve the discipline system. If there are no further questions, can I have a motion to put this out to public comment? There's a resolution on the screen for consideration. There's a resolution on the screen for consideration. It's a 60-day comment period that's proposed.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by De La Cruz, second by Sislos. Madam Secretary, may we have the vote?
Bratton, absent. Chen?
Yes.
Snarrows?
Aye.
De La Cruz?
Yes.
Noel?
Aye.
Selig?
Yes.
Shelby?
Aye.
Sol?
Aye.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays, one absent, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Speaking of a lot of work, it's, it's, I'm going to take a point of personal privilege here to point out a mistake that I made. And that is, I, I assume that our new general counsel has been with us before at a board meeting. And she actually has not. This is the first official board meeting where Eileen Dovtian is here at the dais with us. The reason that I assume this was not her first meeting is because she has hit the ground running and there's been quite a bit of work leading up to this meeting in particular. And so I, I can't believe it's only been a month since you've officially come on board. I, I want to officially welcome you and thank you for accepting the challenge of joining the Office of General Counsel and heading that, heading that up. I would love for you to introduce yourself to the board of trustees and to anybody who's watching and listening.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, members of the Board of Trustees. It's such a privilege and honor to be here. I'm so excited to have joined this great organization that has a very important mission that is actually very close and dear to my, my own personal goals and admirations and, and just being a part of the legal profession. It's been such a journey already. And I think we have great initiatives and goals ahead of us. And I'm so much looking forward to working with everyone on the board and the staff and our stakeholders.
Thank you, Eileen, welcome. And, and I hope you come back tomorrow.
Depends on how close the session goes.
I would like to also, to take the opportunity to thank Vice Chair Stallings for heading up the search committee that produced a very, a very, very robust group of candidates. And I think ultimately the very best candidate to, to serve us in this role. So we look forward to a long tenure of yours here at the bar and have your great legal mind. Thank you. All right, let us continue on the agenda, please. Everybody okay? I don't think we need a break yet, right? I'm always about the breaks. Let me find the agenda. Okay, this is item 702, the Report on Attorney Supervision and Assistance Supervision Strategy Tool. That is Grammy Beglivio and Wolf. And if I, if I butchered a name, I apologize. Welcome, Ms. Grammy, good to see you.
Thank you, you too. So this item is an informational item today. The RAD Committee back in, in March heard a presentation from Doctors Kevin Wolfe and Michael Beglivio, who have joined us here today. They're going to speak in a little bit. I just wanted to set the stage. Back in March, Doctors Beglivio and Wolf were presenting their plan of action and for, for working on an assessment tool that would help to advise the work of the Office of Case Management and Supervision on how to, on supervising respondents within the probation system. And just kind of dovetailing off of everything that we've been talking about today with the, with the strategic plan. This is, this Attorney Supervision and Assistance redesign program is really intended to take a different approach to try to work with respondents, try to identify where they might be struggling and try to prevent recidivism in the future. And so before we hear from Doctors Beglivio and Wolf, who are here to present the results of their, of their work so far, I just wanted to set the stage very quickly in reminding this group what the, what the program is about. So if we can put up the slides. Thank you. Okay, so I, hopefully you can see that it's a little bit small. But just as a reminder, back in 2019, we, we call it the ASAR Program, the Attorney Supervision and Assistance Redesign Program, ASAR, was launched because we were really concerned about these recidivism rates that you can see up on the screen on the top level there. It says the total number. And you can see they're pretty high out of, you know, looking at a large number over 2,695 cases that of individuals on probation. 69% of them received a new complaint. And then that, that number moves on to 56% for those, those complaints being investigated and an additional 35% moving on to filing. So it was a pretty high level of recidivism, people that were already in the supervision, in the discipline system reoffending in some way. And as you can tell by the breakdown too in the, on the slide, there's, there are also concerns with racial disparities within those recidivism rates that we're very concerned about and we want to do something about. And so what the office, they, the Office of Case Management, we retained an expert and a consultant to help us design, based on work that has been done in criminal justice reform and juvenile justice reform, a way that we could have a framework within the office for systems change. We want to improve rehabilitation outcomes, reduce recidivism, increase public protection and assist the state court, the state bar court in enforcing their probation orders. So basically what we're doing is we're moving from a model where we put all of the responsibility on the respondents themselves to self rehabilitate. And it's kind of a one size fits all situation where most people have the same disciplinary conditions to one where we're more targeted in our supervision strategies about what it is that the respondents need and how we can provide better support to prevent them from recidivating. So this is just a slide about the vision of what, what we're trying to achieve. It really is evidence-based. And that's what you're going to hear about from these data analytics experts in a minute, is taking the data that we do have from, from individuals who have been on probation and trying to learn from that so that we can identify the best and appropriate level of supervision for, for the respondents, give them the tools they need to be successful, reduce recidivism, as we talked about, and increase public protection. So there, there are many different components. And what we're going to hear about today is one of these components, which is an assessment tool. But this, I just wanted to put this slide up to just give you an overview of where it fits into the bigger picture. So the first thing is to look at data. We, we've given our experts a bunch of data, as I said, about the individual, a whole subset of individuals who are on probation. And they will explain a little bit more about their methodology in a minute. But that's to help us so that we can use this tool as an objective tool to identify what level of support somebody might need. We also will be, after we work on this particular project, also be developing a needs assessment. So these are more dynamic factors where we can assess and understand what, what kinds of needs or particular individual circumstances the respondents might have. And then from there, we will be developing targeted supervision strategies and case planning and then working with the court. And then another really important thing, and I'll emphasize this at the end too, but is that this is a dynamic process and it's a new process. So we want to keep looking at the data, assessing it and learning from it and refining the tool going forward. So what we are calling our Supervision Strategies Assessment Tool. And I do want to acknowledge that we, this has been referred to as a risk assessment tool. You may have heard that in the criminal justice context. And we had been discussing it this way before. But the more that we've been talking about it with stakeholders and with some of you and understanding what our program is about, this is, we feel a better name for what it is that we're trying to do. Because we're not trying to say these individuals are risky people and they need higher discipline. This is really an assessment for how we can provide more targeted support. And so while we're supervising them in, in probation. So with that, I am going to turn it, we're going to keep using these slides. But Doctors Beglivio and Wolf are going to explain a little bit more about what this tool is, what their methodology was and what their findings were. And just, you can tell me, I can advance the slides. I don't know if we can spotlight them perhaps.
Good afternoon. This is Mike Beglivio. I'm pleased to join you all again. Thank you for having us back. It was an honor to join you in March and then again today to discuss some of the progress. As Bridgette had mentioned, we were tasked with developing an assessment tool that, that can be used to, to look at levels of supervision strategies and supports that are needed, inform the decisions, bring about consistency, accuracy and transparency, with the ultimate goal, of course, to reduce recidivism. Next slide, please. So the data that was provided to us was over 2,500 respondents, attorneys approved or on probation during that 10-year period from 2010 to 2020. We have their demographic information. Now, it's important, of course, these are de-identified. We don't know who they are and have no way to link to who they are specifically. But we do have demographic indicators, charges filed, admissions to the disciplinary system information, disciplinary conditions that were imposed historically and currently, as well as, as Bridgette had mentioned when she showed the recidivism slides, indications of new complaints, new investigations and new filings. Those are distinct measures. We're looking at all three outcomes. We'll talk about that a little bit more. And we're focusing specifically on, on those issues, complaints, investigations or filings within 24 months. Next slide, please. So of course, and as the, the previous presentation had, had mentioned, agenda topic, a primary goal is to make sure that any tool or assessment that's developed is racially and ethnic biased to make sure that.